First of all, item number one on the agenda. Apologies. We're going on. Yeah, fantastic. Declarations of interest. Any member? I asked if they want to declare.
Yeah, I have two. And the first one's for item five, six. Easily explained that long-term solicitor for personal reasons, many years. So I won't be voting on the item. And also item five, nine for the CAV, which I'm council representative on the committee. And I have dispensation to vote on that item today.
Okay.
That's just another interest as well.
Any other interests that may have respect to item on the agenda? Is that being put in as then? The second one?
Is that the second?
Yeah, okay. Item three, could I have somebody confirm, propose the minutes for the last meeting, please? As I was not yet. David proposed, can you second it, please? And all those in favour? And I'll all stay.
Just a point, because there's, if I can ask the chairman. You forgot to let the members of the public know that they would be recorded if they speak.
Thank you, you've just informed me. Members of the public, you will be recorded if you speak. You didn't record it anyway, you don't.
It's by myself and the council.
Deputations by the public. Would any member of the public like to make a deputation?
Go on, I do want to. Go on. You have my important.
It's entirely up to you, how you feel is comfortable.
So my name's Joanna Burrows. I live at 211 Brook Road, which is next to Brookhill School. And it's come to my attention that there may be some problem with the car park that's being planned for the school. And I just want to highlight the fact that parking is already fairly intolerable in that neighbourhood. I've watched a coach backing up between parked cars each side of Brook Road. And it's just been, it's just a very unsafe situation. Children crossing the road at the same time. There's been several near misses with children being let out on the far side of the road. And I just want to find out what the plans are, if there are further extensions to the school, where it's planned that those people will park. It's my understanding that when Brook Priory was going to be built, that they had to provide one car parking space for each family that was going to attend that school. And it just seems inconceivable that they'll extend a school such as Brookhill with a readily intolerable parking situation and then put more families into that situation. My mother lives directly behind me, 29th Bay Drive. And she's had to miss hospital appointments because the ambulance car hasn't been able to get to her house because cars have been parked across her drive.
Really?
On Bay Drive. It's an unsafe and tolerable situation you have already without adding any extra car situation. I have been to the police, I've been to Brookland County Council, I've told you to turn us off. I strongly recommend that no further cars be added, that's already an unsafe situation.
Thank you very much. It's duly noted.
Thank you.
And I believe there is an item on which is...
Yeah, seven.
Seven.
Item number seven, which is to do with car park.
Shall I wait for that?
You can do it, yeah.
If you can bring it, if you can bring that one to this side.
You can do, or, yeah, it's a way, would you like us to do that?
That would be fantastic if you could.
Okay, I would like to propose then that we bring item, agenda item number seven.
Do you want to do that? Do you want to do your deputation then?
Yeah, we can vote on this and then Joyce can do her deputation. So I'd like to propose that we bring agenda item number seven to replace number one. Paul, second that, thank you. All those in favour? Carry it, thank you. So the first item on the agenda after the deputation from Joyce would be the Brookhill School. Okay. Mrs Locus?
As a resident, I wrote this, sorry, on a scrap of paper somewhere between Rhonda... The M4, this morning. I wish to make a deputation on the amount of items on the agenda for this subgroup. If the last planning committee had not been usurped by a full council meeting, then most of these items would have been debated by a whole committee and not just by a handful of members. I realise that there is a time constraint on some items, but this situation of not having a full debate on some issues by a full committee is, in my opinion, unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Duly noted.
Can I ask what that had to do with any of the agenda items? Just picking, because I was always told that it had to be something to do with the agenda.
Any of the agenda items, Mr Chairman, should be by a full committee. Thank you.
So it's reflecting on all the agenda items rather than one individual?
Hmm.
Right, moving on swiftly. Planning application number, item number seven, will now use the votes that we've brought it forward to number one. So that is the...
This is all I've got for it. It's just a variation.
It's a variation of condition number four in relation to planning permission 2015-0262-FUL. Completion of car park priority school extension opening. And what we are aware of, to the best of our knowledge, is that the car park has not been completed before the extension has been completed. That's our understanding.
Does that, like you mean, Mr Chairman? So six space car park should be provided six months after the completion.
That's what they're asking for now, isn't it?
If...
Sorry, yeah?
Yeah, I understand that if something started, then, it'll take a bit, doesn't matter how long it takes, once it's started, once the planning application is put in and they start, then you can finish it.
I think one of the considerations was that the car park was open prior or completed prior to the school extension opening. And I'm assuming that the school extension will be opened in September and the car park isn't yet completed.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's what they had planned. It's very, very vague.
Yeah.
Sorry, Paul?
Well, my concern is the ladies actually raised the issue of safety. I wouldn't support the car park opening that long after the school's been extended.
No, excuse me.
I've got my other head on, I've got a concern about the safety as well.
Yeah, it should have been temporary, wouldn't it, over the school? Not six months later, I think there's no excuse for that.
No, there's not.
So, no, please.
It's my understanding that local residents have raised a petition against this on purely what the public deputation was, that it's a bit horrendous and that the extension shouldn't go ahead if there is no car park. I think members are quite aware of the situation which arose at this council, which prevented the use of some land, which has basically caused this. I think it teaches a lesson to Rutland County Council that they should not presume that Oakham Town Council is going to be successful in what would help out in this situation. And hopefully they've learnt from their mistake. And I will be voting to support the residents by not approving this amendment.
So is that proposal...
Well, I would give a speaker, but my thing is if it was done first properly in the first place, we wouldn't be sitting here today. There was a bit of, had a bit politely, a bit of dishonesty and lack of transparency which has brought us to this position.
So they're not going to, they're not going to complete the actual extension before the children start in September then?
The way I read it, I understand it, yeah.
It's a condition of their planning application is that they complete the car park. Now, I've been approached by Rutland County Council, who's told me I've caused Rutland County Council a huge problem over this. I don't believe that's the case. It's their fault for putting themselves in the situation that they find themselves in. And if the condition is that there should be a car park, then there should be a car park. And if it means delaying the extension, then that's what should happen. But I don't believe they're going to take any notice of us. But I think we could send the right message today.
Michael, what's the strength of that bottom sentence? The school extension becomes operational on the 27th of August?
That's right.
What is the strength of that?
To me, that means that the school is ready to, is completed. And what they are asking for is us to endorse the fact, or the subcommittee to endorse the fact that the car park will not be ready prior to the opening, which to me...
Was due to legal issues.
And I don't believe the car park will ever be ready because the Woodland Trust pulled out and said they don't want to talk about it anymore.
No, Mr Chairman, what I mean is, have our extra children coming in on this next term, dependent on that school extension semi-operational 27th of August?
Yes, I believe so.
Then how can the extension be held up?
I don't believe it can be.
Right.
Well, I think that the extension is ready, but the car park's not.
So this is a question that's being asked that can only have one answer.
I don't see that the extension is ready.
We should suggest to Rutland County Council that they make other provisions for parking and that would satisfy the residents as well, till the car park is finished.
I think that is worthy of proposal. Personally, I think remotely, they should be shipping them in until the car park is finished.
Yeah, so we've got to, they've got to make alternative alternatives. An accommodation for the car parking.
So, Mr Chairman, is that proposal on the basis that they do it between now and the...
Well, it's, they either provide it, other car parking somewhere else, or they get it finished in time. One idea there.
I was just thinking, a good idea there is, they could actually do something based on what other towns and cities do of the park and ride service until they can sort it out. They could have parking in wherever in town.
Rutland County Council.
They could put a bus, they could put a bus on for the children.
That's a struggle there to turn around.
Rutland County Council have actually got the co-op park and ride.
But as it stands, I can't vote to allow that to continue because it's part of their condition and it's not our fault that the condition is causing the park.
But we're here to make recommendations. The recommendation is that they've got to provide other...
Yeah, which I agree, it's a positive thing in there.
Yeah, they've got to provide other car parking.
Because there's other land in that area they could approach.
Or they've got to complete it on time.
Could I propose therefore that we tell them we disagree with their variation of the condition number four? That's the first point. And the second part of the proposition is that they make alternative arrangements for new children until the students' car park is finished.
To alleviate, caveat to that would be to alleviate additional congestion to the Burley Road in the state.
Probably, probably.
The M2.
Something else. Yeah, probably the other way.
David, we've got a proposal on the table.
Can we be specific and include the park and ride minibus service so that they're clear of what you mean?
Yeah, whatever, whatever provision they can...
Yeah, so the proposal on the table currently stands as a two-part proposal that is to... Sorry, can you read it again?
That we don't agree with the variation of condition number four.
Yeah, that's point one.
And secondly, that the county council puts sufficient provision in place that gives access to their extension to make sure they alleviate the traffic issues on Brook Road. And what they do, as long as they do it.
Absolutely, by David.
Can we include a park and ride?
Well, that would be down to the council to provide alternative arrangements.
We can suggest, that's what we're here for.
We can suggest.
And that's why I would like to include it as a positive thing.
Probably we can put that in something else in the bed. I'm going to suggest something.
All of us can do it. For example, park and ride.
Yeah, for example, park and ride might be included.
And then they know where we stand on it.
So we've got proposed second, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
Hope that helps.
Thank you very much.
Suggest that the highway department have another look at the area.
Yeah, well, I've been tasked to go up there with my other hat on.
Because if the buses backing up in a public highway, it's not...
But it's any, it's any school in Oakham. You've got Oakham School on Burley Road, well, like present, you can't move them. It's something that needs to be looked at everywhere.
Going back to the original agenda item number one. Can I propose that items number ones, two and three, I asked the tree warden, as she is present, that she would like to approach the table.
I'll sit in my spot.
I'll say that again then.
It's okay.
As said, the agenda items number one, two and three on the old agenda, I'd like the tree warden to approach and...
I've approached.
And make as aware of your reports. Reference the tree issues, please.
Mr Bert fell one lime tree at the Avenue Horn, but please note he's not called it now, understand. This tree, unfortunately, we've both looked at it, haven't we, Chair?
We have.
And a real injury. Unfortunately, I would suggest it should be felled. Don't like felling trees. The tree was there before the, before... Have you got any information?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get it round.
It's there.
The tree was there before the extension, unfortunately. And the tree has never been looked after. So I suggest that you approve the felling of this tree and add in that the other trees ought to be looked after in that vicinity by the owners because they'll come back in a couple of years' time and say, I want that one felling now. They need to be looked after in that area. Recommend approval for felling.
Okay, thank you. What we'll do is we'll take a report from three, Joyce, if that's all right.
Oh, all right.
And then we'll discuss each one individually, or do you want to do it each one individually?
I think it's straightforward.
Well, I personally think they are, yeah.
I'm going to do the next one, that's...
Yeah, you can do it.
All right. This tree in Peterborough Avenue.
Northgate.
Oh, sorry, Northgate, is it? All right, Northgate.
There's absolutely nothing for this one.
Oh, no, for you, Northgate. Okay, I'll put it the other way around on my left arm.
Can I ask where Northgate Farmhouse is in?
It's opposite, it's, I should go in up North... Going up Northgate from the Methodist Church. On the right, you have some new houses set back from the road. Northgate is a long white barn. Years ago was a barn and now it is a house dwelling. Yeah. Okay, which is relevant actually. Because I'm new to felled one oak tree. I didn't have to go back to RCC to find out where the oak tree was. And I did find out that it wasn't an oak tree at all, it's a sycamore. And if you look at the house, you can actually see it above the house. Now, the fact is, if you're coming from town to the railway station, that will be significant if it is felled because it adds to the street scene. Coming from the station, you can only see it quite over the top, over the top of the house.
How close is it to the house? More or less?
It's, it's not right next door to the house. But you know, you're not furnished with enough information.
Of, I'm just... I addressed this this morning, actually, with the planning department.
It's a significant tree. It adds to the street scene. I suggest the application is withdrawn and resubmitted as minimal work to be carried out. Now, I have spoken to the arboriculturists at Rutland County Council and that's what they have suggested.
Well, thank you.
So we're both going to be saying the same thing, so it's changed.
In the same point of time.
Yes, sounds like it. Yeah.
Yeah, we should suggest to them it wouldn't be a good idea felling it anyway. So to probably dry the, you know, dry the land down and crack the foundations.
So the next one is the Peterborough Avenue one.
Peterborough Avenue, 16 Peterborough Avenue. I've been to see this tree. It's situated on a slope, but the tree is upright. Okay, you've got the gist of it. It's a large specimen and practically every branch has got dieback on. Not the full branch, just the meter of the... That is dreadful. Right, it's an oak tree.
Quercus.
It's a large specimen with dieback at the ends of most of the branches. There's weeping in the main front, which I don't know what it is. It's not very nice, dudge, whatever it is. If the tree fails and it falls, because it's on the slope, it will cause considerable damage to the neighbouring property, even though it's quite a way, it's a big tree and the neighbouring property is quite a way away. But it will fall that way. And though it's, it's a prominent tree, there are, I think it's three trees. The other two have got to save by felling this one. So regretfully, I don't like felling trees, but I recommend that it is felled. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Insurance are going to want that to happen, aren't they?
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, say again.
Insurers are going to want that to happen. And I'm going to say, if it's left and there's some damage, because you should have done something, no way, no way out.
And I don't know what the, what the weeping stuff is, but I don't want it to go on to the other two trees out there.
It might be the sap that's coming out of the straight trunk.
It's brown, so...
Might be too well diseased. So going back to the lime tree, I'd like to bring everybody's attention to the fact that the tree warden has suggested that the tree is felled with a maintenance plan for the remaining trees along the front curtilage of the...
It's not the front curtilage, Chairman, it's the, there's a smaller one at the back as well, the old one.
There isn't there, yes, sorry.
Yeah, the old one, just looking at it.
The front, really curtilage then?
Yeah, thank you.
Having looked at this tree, it's what, about 70 feet in the air? If not tad more, it's got, you know, it must not be doing the foundations of the terrace house any good. So would somebody like to pose that we agree with the tree warden and have this tree felled? Somebody want to second it for me, please? All those in favour?
I'll stay.
Martin, hey. Item number two, the one on Northgate. This is a sycamore and it's met on oak. Adds to the street scene and suggested by the tree warden that it is not felled, but maintenance work is carried out to ensure the suitability of the tree for the future. Well, that was in favour, sorry, seconded? Is that?
Seconded.
Seconded, Martin, seconded that. All those in favour? Heard unanimously. And the last one is the felled number one, or one oak tree on Peterborough Avenue. Following the tree warden's suggestion that this should be felled due to saving the adjacent trees. Would somebody like, proposed by Paul and seconded by David? All those in favour?
I'll stay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going.
I think that worked, I see. I think that worked.
Joyce? Joyce, do you have a bit of paper, can you have it?
I'm not.
Your deputy.
You can have it if you want to. If you can read it.
Mind you, it is a deputation. It should be brought up when the committees are, what Alf was saying, the staff committee in two months' time has been delayed to when all the committees are going to be reconsidered.
All right. Right, item number four on the agenda, single story extension to the rear for the property of eight, Griffiths Close. Everybody familiar with this property and where it is? So it is a single story, extension to the rear of the property. Anybody like to start with this one? Martin?
No comment, it's just an extension.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's quite straightforward, really.
Thanks God, I've prepared, if I'm looking at it right, a pitched roof. So it's not going to be a problem in the future.
Reasonably good.
Just as, as this has come up, is that more desirable, less desirable, than a conservatory being put in that position? I know it's a fascinating question. Is, is having something with a fixed roof and everything?
You don't need, you don't need planning permission for conservatories.
That's the answer, you don't.
Depends on the size.
As long as it's two-sides, if less, you don't need it.
So is this a classed as a golden roof and all the conservatories?
It's not a, you know, it's an extension. It's an extension, it's only got a (inaudible) to be prepared. Otherwise, if it were, if it were a conservatory, we wouldn't need planning.
A chartered extension in the golden roof.
I propose to you.
Okay, proposed to me, yeah. Proposed to pass by David, so we second it, please? Seconded by Michael, all those in favour? Carry it. And number five, this is the one that you were saying.
This is, well, we've got four, one, six.
So did I give you the wrong?
Oh no, I've got six, six and a half.
Yeah, it's agenda item five, item six, and agenda item five, nine.
Right, so this is agenda item five, one and a half storey building with other adjacent gatehouse and Kilburn Road.
Yeah. So this is a cemetery gatehouse.
Yes, it is.
That's the, that's a new building.
Yeah, but the gatehouse is next to it.
That's right, that's a new building.
The gatehouse, historically, is a bungalow.
That's what we refer to in the last two or three years.
That, that was the old gate to Woodall Duckens, where that is.
Yeah, I had a look at this one and really, it's all fence and trees. You can't see anything. But I had a look at all the paperwork on it and one of the planning officers is a bit concerned about the railway owning the land, that strip of land there, and that, you know, have they, have they bought the land off the railway? And did they outline planning on the plot before they put in for the full planning? Usually when you sell a plot, you usually have outline planning on it. But I don't know what the... But I don't know what the situation is on this. Anybody else? Anybody? It's a, it's a very small plot.
It's very small.
It's only two bedrooms. And if supply parking at the front, it's just, you know, they just don't supply enough information. And one, one of the planning officers is concerned about that land at the back of the bungalow could be still there. It could have been part of the cemetery that, there might be, there might be babies buried there.
Right.
This is what she brought up.
Was there any concerns from the, from the council?
It's a, it's the last one, I think.
This is, this is R C C.
Yeah, that way around. Something keep out. Oh, yeah, still gone, still going pairs. But she could find out one way or the other.
So just to get right to my own mind, I used to live on Gilmore, so I was literally a stone's throw from where this is going to be. But just getting right to my own mind, you've got the archway to go into the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got the bungalows that are actually facing the cemetery, which has all been renovated.
It's on the right.
So it's on the right hand side, the old one.
There was another garden of the old house at one of the corners there.
Yeah.
So it is possible.
They don't like the idea of a new building up there.
Yeah.
It's very, very tight.
Very tight. And this question of whether there is still going there. And, you know, network rail, probably network rail, so written, I don't know if it's so.
Does comments concern me? The comments from the surveyor. Quite something to be taken into consideration.
Yeah, the surveyor's one.
They're knowing, no idea, because I used to walk out of Gilmore to call the nurse, the gap to the hedge, dead facing that. I've seen it from the writers, to be honest.
I see we propose.
They don't give us, they don't give us the date of when these babies were unfortunately buried. But what concerns me is if they did go ahead, thinking they knew that, what if a family member turned up?
Yeah.
It's shocking, really.
What if they were digging in the garden?
To be fair, I think there's not enough information on this, on the gender item, and whether we pose to not accept the application on the grounds of not enough information and see how much time we've got, whether we can.
I'd, I'd like to look into more about that burial site. That's a concern.
Propose though, what we, what we propose is that the set, with the, the surveyor's report, we should actually ask if they can make other investigations into whether there is a burial. I think back to stillborn and, and see, you know, how it's become a building plot. I mean, they must have, is it the house on the right? Is it the house on the right that's having it built at bottom of the garden? I mean, we, we don't know, do we?
My, my personal view is there's not enough information.
There's not, no.
Uh, what, do you want time report, mate?
On the seventh, twenty eighth of July, three weeks.
A week, yeah, yeah. I, I think we should, to be on the safe side, I think we should take it down.
I'd, I'd decline it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I think we should also ask the Brooklyn County Council to seriously look into that. When you consider what's been happening in the news about
Yes.
babies and problems around cremation, it's that, if that was in, well, it is in the public domain, but if something went wrong, that could be, have serious implications for the town.
You don't know.
I would have believed as well, I don't know the ins and outs of stillborn, I know it's a sort of, it's a very sensitive issue, but it's possible that it may not be consecrated ground. But if it was consecrated, then there must be a record to show where it is and when it was de-consecrated, because that's important.
Very important.
Yeah.
And I made a simple proposition, sorry, Martin.
Very simple proposition, that on the basis of information given, we decline it.
Yes.
But would recommend that our C C follow the issues raised in the estate surveyor's letter.
Yeah.
Martin, you could say something?
There's cover, no.
Okay, sorry.
I think it's a network rail.
Yeah.
And let's worry about that, because if they build on it, then they've got legal problems.
If we say we decline it on the information given, but would recommend that they follow all the issues in there and lose the, the burial sign.
Yeah, that's the most serious part of it, isn't it?
Really, because starting in the bungalow and digging.
I mean, that's a problem we could inherit.
Have you got the proposal? Yeah, okay. Somebody second that. Thank you. All those in favour? So it is.
Because that, that could be a problem if we take over in two thousand and sixteen. I can't see it happening. We'd get the backlash.
Very, very interesting.
Yeah, exactly.
Item A.
Item number six.
This is probably the first.
Oh, yeah, this is, so this is the one you're not going to vote on, is it, Martin?
That's the one I'm not going to vote.
You can stand the room, yeah?
Yeah, because I can make a comment, but I can't vote.
Item A. Revised plans for part demolition of existing residential bungalow and extension to the front and addition of two new floors and change of use to office with associated external works for parking and landscape areas, sixty six South Street. Yeah.
He's very keen.
Before we start, this is, this is the third plan, and that we passed the first one without saying anything. Which is.
Well, I wasn't on the council.
Don't give us that, David.
Uh, I think it would, I haven't got it down here. March. They approved it in March.
Oh, yeah.
And then we've got a revised plan, and now we've got another revised plan. Uh, the first one, it should have never been approved because.
It's a bad, it's a safe capital, building.
In what?
Yeah, I don't know, I agree with you.
Probably what, hold on. The, the actual plan was disgusting. It was a combination.
Is this biggest on the off for council?
I don't know, but we passed it.
I think it was a subcommittee.
Right. It was passed anyway. The other thing as well, being noticed as the conservation officer, you know, very concerned that we were turning this area into offices and shops and everything, and I, I agree with him. Although the new plan, the third plan, is a nice plan, it looks all right.
I'm going to start, is this on the same side as Tesco?
It's next to the Cobblers.
Drawing back towards Mill Street.
Yeah, straight opposite jail street.
Yeah, you turn on the Tesco left and right.
As you go.
Martin, put your hand up.
Yeah, just to make my comment. Sorry.
I thought I figured you saw it.
No. No, but i- in a way, it's interesting how the conservation officer is now picking up on this, because I was disappointed when we lost various houses in Jail Street and most recently the beauty salon taking over a small house. Um, my view of this bungalow is that we don't have enough in Oakham. And if you're of a certain age or even past a disability, this is an ideal located residential property. Needs a little bit of work on it. And where it's located by Tesco is in the centre of town. I, I, I don't think the council should be approving it.
No, no. I think we, we should take note of the conservation officer. Although they jumped through a lot of hoops with the different designs to satisfy the residents on the car parking and such.
And he's just working up to the houses all disappearing along there.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
My, my personal view is that there is enough empty high street for, um, commercial use.
Yeah, there's plenty of office around.
We shouldn't be, um, change of use or knocking down without replacing with something similar that's not actually moving forward and actually moving backwards.
From three points of view, I think, as David said, it shouldn't have been approved in March without by the by. Secondly, I agree with Martin, it's a residential, it should stay, so it should. Thirdly, I don't think there's any need to change these options because there's plenty of space, so it's plenty of space to find it.
Yeah, so that's opposed of.
Yes.
So on the grounds of
Conservation.
Conservation.
And no need to turn it to, um, what's the word, commercial.
Yeah. Seconded by you, David, was that?
Yes.
All those in favour?
All right, please, about any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next, what comes is Hegarty Incorporated Big Sign.
I don't know, tell us what happens on there.
Yes, they're moved down.
Yeah.
Seven have done.
Seven have done. Number eight. V I I R. As part, sorry.
No, sorry, I'm just talking to myself.
As part of the total refurbishment of the shopfront of twenty six and twenty seven High Street, Oakham, it is proposed to install three paint finish cream signboards, ten mil thick, fret cut, polished edged, letters in plum, full of perspex as a new fascia, replacement fascia on twenty seven High Street.
That's the image officer.
It's going to improve, isn't it?
So just go away, come on.
He's got to improve, he can't.
He's had.
Because he looks a mess at the moment.
All right, so proving it unfortunate, I suppose.
Yeah. Um, to be fair, I actually think it improves the look of the high street, a little more traditional values. Perspex isn't traditional, but it's, it's a modern sort of.
It's neat in time. It is, it is, it does improve that side of the high street. It's a new velour place, it was awful.
They've, they've used an old English font that they've maintained through a period of their other shops.
Yeah.
It's like, so nice to see all these.
They're renewing that as well, aren't they?
Sorry?
They're renewing the old shop, which will make it a little better still.
So, um, any other thoughts, concerns, Martin?
Yeah, I, I think it's wonderful. I think it's, it's going to be a great improvement because, yes, they're, you know, but, but I do have a concern about the perspex signs myself. I think they're trying to give the traditional look and obviously I've seen their Stamford store and I would like to see the, the sign rather than being in plastic traditional look that, that they, I've just asked, and I've got a feeling with past comments from the conservation officer about signs, which I don't have a problem with in the town, that he is possibly going to object to perspex. And I think possibly we should recommend that it would be nice if it was properly sign righted, written. Written.
The thing about it is, yeah, the thing about it is, I suppose in terms of longevity of the sign and also maintenance. Um, but the thing is, if you paint those things in matte paint, they don't look as bad, it's a sort of shiny perspex.
No, it's right if you use a, a matte, a matte perspex.
It's almost like, like, you know, a wooden.
It's going to be a very imposing fascia once it's all completed. When if you look at, I disagree with the comment that it's a mess as it is, you know, it's, it's very imposing.
The property.
You didn't say that, you didn't say that, no. But it's, it's, it's the two stores that they have at the moment are very imposing and that's quite modern looking. And I just think the muddle of modern and traditional, it's not, to my personal thing, it's not.
They wouldn't sign write it anyway, they'd just make transfers.
Well, if they made transfers.
They never signed writing, did they? They just transferred it to.
I'm sure you could find one, they, they still exist. Well, that's just my opinion, you know, other people can have different views. I just think if you're going to do something traditional, which they're trying to do there, then you stick to tradition, don't spoil it by sticking in a plastic, because perspex signs get broken.
So what should be?
People have a habit of going from the pubs and pulling them down.
What should be in wood?
It could be wood, like, because I think Stamford is wood, isn't it?
Stamford's an oak sign with black walkers.
Yeah, it's very traditional. They really did a good job doing up that building.
But I think that's more in keeping with the vista of their high street rather than.
They're sort of trying to recreate.
And my personal view is that, actually, you've got the, the old traditional font of old English meeting the contemporary look with perspex with a nice plum background.
Congratulations, Mr Chin, I'm going to use some language.
Well, I'm only just putting my opinion, if people disagree, then they can disagree. I, I, this is my opinion.
This is match, can't it?
Sorry?
Should match, can't it? Sanz, Sanz have insisted on what's on there.
I think they must have done, yes, it's an old background.
That's because that was a listed problem.
And realistically, if you look at the shop next door to going up the high street towards Leesons, it's, uh, there's two shops there, one's ladies clothes and one's ladies shoes. They've both got perspex raised signs. But I, I know that the exception doesn't make it, we should.
I, I, I find it frustrating that there's no continuity in the town and that's what I'd like to see. You know, we can get Carphone Warehouse that can only stick or transfer thing and can't have perspex. But now they're saying possibly that this could have perspex.
Is there any comment on that, the other council? How about the conservation officer?
And then we get a wooden one for wild wood and the conservation officer says it's the worst sign he's ever seen. I think he needed to clean his glasses back then. He knows I'm ill at that, but, but, you know, it just, there is no continuity.
It says it's a paint finish, so it's to install paint finish cream signboard with ten mil thick fret cut, polished edged in plum coloured perspex. I accept what you're saying, Martin, about that people could come, walk down the high street and take the letter off. However, I don't think they will, they have to be about eight foot tall.
Well, they do. There, some do go in the town.
We have mixed views at the table. Any more comments?
Let's tell them we've got mixed views. We, we would prefer it done traditionally.
Okay.
But we, we pass it, but we would prefer it.
My personal, personal view is that the perspex letters actually do look better than just straight going on to a board.
Yeah.
So, you know, because it gives you a bit of, it does a damp sound. Uh, and it gives you a change, depending on the light, depending on where the sunshine, it gives you a drop shadow for that particular time of day, because that's mainly.
Problem with signs is that you can't tell what they're like until they're actually done unless you get a sample.
It's too late, isn't it?
So it's too late.
So what edge is best?
So have we got a proposal on the table today?
We think it's wonderful and they can go ahead as long as the conservation officer is happy with the finer details of the signs.
Are you proposing that?
Just a bit bothered that it's not.
Maybe not elsewhere.
It's just flowing.
Martin's proposing that.
I just say that we, we accept it, but we hope the conservation officer will pay attention to the signage and the policy.
More traditional materials rather than.
Yeah, if he feels that way inclined. He doesn't like wood at the moment, so maybe he likes this, I don't know.
Well, yeah, you might go into individual cases.
We put in a proposition, anyway.
We put in the proposal, the more traditional materials.
I've sent it. Sorry, did you put in?
I think so, yes. It was just that we accept it on the provider that the conservation officer is happy with the sign.
Material, yeah.
Material, yeah.
Choice of more traditional materials.
Well, we, I would prefer, but that's me saying that.
Well, no, if that's what they're saying, propose it, then propose it.
Yeah, but if he feels we would support his view if, if, if a choice of more traditional material was used for the signs.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favour?
So who seconded it?
Michael.
Michael.
All those in favour, carried unanimously. Right, item A.
I think we're going to discuss things properly at this meeting.
Sorry?
Sorry, I'm not talking out. I just said it's good. We seem to get to discuss things properly at this meeting.
All right, okay.
It's good.
Um, the last one on the agenda is one X, the ninth, installation of public access to a defibrillator on the outside wall of the Memorial Institute Building, that fronts Jail Street to High Street. So we're going to have a defibrillator box with a punch code. Any problems, any concerns?
I, um, I don't like it on the front of the building. Clearly, they're, they're ghastly looking things. They obviously do a good job and hopefully no one will ever need to open one in Oakham. But I've always thought a better location for one of those would be on the end wall of Knights here. But I've always thought a better location for one of those would be on the end wall of nights here.
Yeah, a bit sticky.
By the gate, yeah. But to put it on the front of what is technically, well, it isn't, it's extraordinary, yes, it is a listed building. I, I just find it, if it was on the side somewhere, then because people are told where they are when they phone.
Plan where it's actually going.
It probably would be better on the actual.
Because it says outside wall, that fronts onto Jale Street, High Street.
That's right.
Yes, it's.
But it's very visible, it's very, very visible.
On the front of the C A B.
No, it's not on the front.
No, no, but it's visible and what concerns me is that people sit on that bench there and it will become a place for bottles and.
It's a bench on the corner of Jale Street.
There's benches both sides.
No, there's not.
No, no, this is, you couldn't have.
You're talking about High Street.
It's next to the house.
There was a bench, maybe they've taken it away, I haven't noticed. It's not there, there was a bench there, because I used to pick up the wine bottles and put them in the bin.
No, because if you, if you look at the farmers market, they have the lot switch.
So they took the bench away, so I don't notice anything.
Well, if you walked around the town a little bit more.
I'm always round the town. I noticed, I noticed that the bench, the Jubilee bench was destroyed.
So much time in clubs clothes, something like that.
The Jubilee bench was destroyed outside.
It's next to the actual.
We've had a proposal set by Michael. Seconded by Paul, all those in favour? Carried, abstained by.
I voted against.
And it's been on the front mark, I think.
But it's still visual because you've got the entrance to the, what do they call that, the memorial hall, which is a nice door. It's got our notice board next to it, which is nice, nicer notice board and it's, there is just going to look, and it would be unsure, it would end up in a litter.
What if we put it in that like the old cabinet?
Well, they can't really do that because it.
Sixteen fifty.